All right. Good evening, everybody. This is the town of Sherburne, Massachusetts zoning board of appeals. It's Wednesday night, April 3rd, 2024. This is a regular non-40B hearing. We've got a series of matters to cover, so let's just get right to it. Oh, I am the chair, Rick Novak. Jonathan Fitch, members Jonathan Fitch and Zach McBride are with us. Todd Labby will not be with us tonight, but he will watch on video as needed. Okay. Item 2024-3 continuation petition of Colin Flynn, Sherburne Commons LLC. Special permit for retail space with signage at 11 South Main. I think you were before us on this on March 12th, Colin? Yeah, there you are. I see you right there. And you were going to come back and tell us about the signage. So you're on, sir.
All right. So I did send an email with the signage and I don't know if I can share the screen, but it's some window decals that have the hours of the business and the name of the business in a kind of a logo format. And then a sandwich board type sign that would be at the street.
All right, let me see if I can share my screen if I can find it unless you want to raise me, Jeannie. But it's just the the sign on the on the glass door is the is sort of the building sign for this one. And then you'll have the sandwich board out front at the street.
And then there'll be a placard on the street building sign that just has all the tenants' names. So.
The ladder.
You know, an old tenant name will be replaced, but that I don't think needs a permit.
Right. But but we'll mention it so that so that you'll have it have it in the record. Let me see if I can find that email.
I may be able to share here. Is that working?
Minimize my Zoom? Yes, it is perfectly. Excellent. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, and.
And those are just representative doors. They're the I'm not changing the doors on the building. It's just showing the what, you know, general size in an application on the on the glass.
Right. And this is the what I think was the downstairs doors at the back, right? Lower level?
Correct.
Got it. Sorry.
Oh, just so that the here is the sandwich board and there's an actual finished product of that, which is this.
Oh, excellent. And do you have sizes for these plans, sir?
I think I don't have exact dimensions. I'm sure I could have Belsie's provide those. But just, you know, they would fit within the, you know, the door frame of, you know, the glass on a door, their glass.
Colin, I'm also on. It should be in that email that I sent you. They're in the size of the decals are in there as well as well as the sandwich board side.
Let me see if I can try to find that.
And the woman who was speaking, you sounds like you're the design designer?
No, I'm the owner of the potential business moving in. I'm Belsey Gonzalez. Nice to meet you.
Oh, nice. Nice. Nice to see you. Welcome.
Okay, so the yeah, the logo for the door is 24 inches square. The hours is 18 by 24 inches and the sidewalk sign is 20 by 30.
Okay, all right. And did someone look at the zoning bylaw to see if they fit in? Please say yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and and how did you determine that? It's not a test. We're just trying to.
If you look at 5.2.7, which is signs in a business district, I believe that they 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 fit just fine.
Okay, that kind of permanent ground sign, special permit sign, building sign. Not more than 12 inches.
Some of them are allowed. One foot square is allowed, but then you can have you can have permitted ones that are.
A special permitted, it can go up to 12, 60 square feet, which we're way under. Okay, excellent. And the temporary sign is the.
Sandwich board.
Sandwich board. And I think our rules on the sandwich boards are each business gets one.
Yep.
And it has to come in at the end of the day. Can't just leave them out there all night.
Right.
Okay. Okay. That exhausts my questions. Are there other board members who have questions here or members of the public who wish to speak for or against the petition? I'm not generating a lot of up. Sorry.
I would I well, I don't know if I speak for myself, but obviously I'm I'm speaking for all of this.
Okay. Well, we'll note that the applicant and the applicant's landlord are both firmly in favor of the of the petition. Anybody else? Okay. Board members, other questions from you gentlemen?
I don't have any questions.
Anybody feel sorry, go ahead, Zach.
Sorry, no questions.
Okay. I'd make a motion that we approve the petition under 3.2.19 and 5.2.7 under all of the conditions that are for the the general special permit for that building. And with the with the additional conditions that the sandwich board sign be 20 by 30 and taken in at the end of the day as all other sandwich board signs are required to be and that the 24. What is the size of the of the building sign?
The the logo sign is 24 inches square and the hours sign is 18 by 24.
Okay, and that the 24 square inch logo sign and the 18 by 20 hour sign as shown in the materials presented to the board are approved in addition to listing the tenant on the the ladder sign for the for the overall project. That's my motion.
I second that.
All right. Any further debate?
Term.
Sorry?
Term.
What have we been doing in these five years?
Five.
Five? Okay, term five years. As amended, that's my motion on the table. Moved and seconded. Any further debate? All in favor, say aye. Do it by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Fitch, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right. Good luck with your business, ma'am. I hope it works out fabulously for you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Colin, thanks for coming in.
Yep.
All right. Next up, petition 2024-7. Peter Schneidman for a special permit under 3.2.22, 5.2.3, 5.2.7. To operate an automotive repair business with signage at 26 North Main Street. Business G District. It's my understanding, Mr. Schneidman, that this is the business that we now know as Rose's Automotive. Maybe it will come under a different name. Maybe maybe not. That'll all be up to you. And it's further my guess that you haven't closed yet, but what you want from us is some sort of conditional approval that will pop into play when you actually close.
Correct. That's exactly correct.
Okay. I'm an excellent guesser sometimes. All right. So tell tell us either either you or Ed, go ahead and tell us about this this new business and and why it should get a special permit.
Well, from my perspective, I mean, I've known Ed for, you know, since he opened and I actually I grew up in Sherburne. And so, you know, my plan was once the purchase is finalized, I'm not changing anything. You know, I'm not changing the name. I'm not changing anything. You know, Ed's built a successful business over 32 years. And if it's not broken, I'm not going to fix it. So I'm looking to come in and just basically take over for Ed, but maintain the exact same business model, maintain the same personnel, you know, maintain everything that Ed's built over the last 30 plus years.
Got it. So the only thing that would actually happen would be the the actual ownership of the facility and the business would change.
Correct. Nothing else. There's no name change, no change in signage, no change in in anything.
All right. Mr. Rose, do you have anything to say about this?
No, I think it's great. I had a lot of people looking at the business, but Peter came in and he said, I gotta keep all the people. He is a he's a businessman. He's not a mechanic, so he has to keep all the people that I have there. So it's a it's a plus. And we thought we were going to be done by the end of this month, but it's we're a little setback. So hopefully by June we'll be done, but I still want to keep running my business there until Peter takes over. So if I could, you know, have some type of I don't have two business permits running at the same time. So.
Got it. Okay. Board members, I have I have a way through that thicket that I think might work that I'll try it out on you. It but it depends. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against the petition of Peter Schneidman to get a new special permit identical to Ed Rose's existing special permit to run the automotive repair business at 26 North Main Street? Not generating much opposition here. Good for you. Okay. Board members, how do you feel about this? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me let me tell you. My my proposal is that we would if we vote to give him the petition, we'd give him the the all the conditions that Ed has, but an additional condition, which is his new special permit does not go into effect until we get a letter from him and Ed that they have closed. So sort of in suspended animation. And that way they can go ahead and do their deal. And but no, but we're only getting one permit at a time. That that that's my proposal to you, you fellas.
Okay, well, that makes a lot of sense and it's good to hear that Peter's going to take on this business and and maintain it in the center of town. I've been very highly valued franchise over the years and so I'm all in favor.
All right. I guess we can't put it put it in a condition that he has to keep the Novak cars running, but that's always been done anyway. So. Zach, how do you feel about this?
You know, supportive. I think it's it's great that you're trying to continue Ed's legacy and I think, you know, I'm a newbie at Sherburne, but I've relied on roses and so I'm glad to see that it'll continue. So no, no objections. I appreciate your path forward, Rick.
Okay. Any further comments from anybody? Or against? Okay. Board members, I hereby propose that we conditionally grant petition 2024-7 to Mr. Schneidman under all the same conditions of addition 2024-3, which is no, excuse me, wrong one. Under 2024-2, which is the current operating permit that Ed Rose has. So all those same conditions and the further additional condition that the new permit 2024-7 is becomes effective only when Mr. Rose and Mr. Schneidman have submitted a written letter to the board certifying that the closing has been completed. That's my motion.
I second that.
All right. Any further discussion, Zach? Jonathan? All right. Any? Yes?
Term. Term.
Ah. I well, I'd have it continue to run.
And currently?
Yeah, the 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 current one runs.
Five years.
We just ran it out five years, so I think you'd just pick up that that five year.
Perfect. Thank you.
For a new term of five years. It's only been a couple of months.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote aye. We'll do it by roll call. Novak votes aye.
Fitch, aye.
McBride, aye.
Okay, motion carries, Mr. Schneiderman, Mr. Rose. Congratulations. Thank you for your service to the town. Literally.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good.
Okay. Next up.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good night.
All right. Next up, petition 2024-8. Christopher Balo for a finding at at one point under 1.4.6 for addition to a not pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at 42 Whitney Street. And it sounds like he has a related petition for an additional dwelling unit. But Mr. Balo, maybe you can tell us yourself what you have in mind.
Sure. Good evening. And that's correct. We do have two things before you tonight. Can I share my screen with you guys?
Yes, please.
Excellent. So I'm Chris Balo. I'm the architect for 42 Whitney Street. I'm here together with a bunch of my team members. I can't see on the screen, but I know they're there. And the first thing that we have in front of you tonight is a request for a finding for the existing main house structure. Just a brief overview of where we are, Whitney Street between Western Avenue and I would say the Ashland Shaws. We're all fairly familiar with that area. The house itself is a dates back to at least 1890. It's a large conforming lot with an existing what was had different lifespans, but a garage and workshop that exists on the site currently. So you can see on the screen on the plot plan, this is the existing structure and the existing garage, both of which are topics tonight. So for the first for the finding, just wanted to give you a brief overview of the existing structure. It's a fairly typical 1890s New England farmhouse who's had different lives lives and different materials added to it over time. And what we're looking to do is renovate it and add an addition that brings back some of the original New England vernacular of the house and just update it for today's living. So the, like I said, the property itself is conforming. The house on the front setback is existing non-conforming. It's currently at so the front setback to the existing house is 24.6 feet as it exists. And as is allowed in this in the zoning bylaws is 60 feet. So that's really the only thing that is holding this addition back that I can see. So with that in mind, here is this is the proposed site plan. So the main house, what we're doing is adding a proposed addition. As you can see labeled and that L shaped area is a porch that will be added as well.
Hey, Chris, can you just while we're on that plan, can you zoom in just a little bit? It's awfully tiny.
I'm sorry. Yep.
Yeah, that's all right. No, no, you're doing great. Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, you've got the one and a half story house. Part of it's being raised and it is included in the addition and the addition goes off the back. It's roughly a 20 by 30 structure.
Got it.
Not including the porch, which is about nine feet deep.
Okay.
Altogether with the with the proposed addition, it's around, it's a little under 2,900 square feet as proposed, 28,900. Yeah, like I said, the the porch area is nine feet deep. Going to the next, here, let me zoom out. So these are the proposed elevations. Obviously, this is the the Whitney Street facade. Adding just bring back some of the original character of the house that you can find on it, which was a little bit more Greek revival. And making just giving some vocabulary to it that is more consistent all the way through the house and not just from different times that it's been renovated. We like to think that it's very thoughtfully done, fits in with the neighborhood, it's a betterment overall. And the addition itself is not making the house any more non-conforming than it currently is. If you see anything as I'm scrolling, just let me let me know. So this is this, this is the side side elevation, the rear elevation. And that that is the side elevation where the main entrance is. So this is Whitney Street coming up, what is the existing driveway. The main entrance, the addition off the back. Again, the side entry, the the side elevation and the rear elevation.
Okay, and and just to be very clear, it sounds like not only are you not moving the wall that's nearest the street, you're essentially not touching it.
Other than other than repair, no.
Yeah, to better prepare, but you're not going to be right. Okay, excellent.
Everything stays exactly where it is. It's all going off the back. And all those setbacks do conform to the the existing.
Yes.
Any questions or anything else I can clarify for you? I think that's basically for this portion.
Okay, and the and the owner's on and the owner is obviously in in favor of this request for a finding. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor or against? This this is a request, this is just a request for a finding under 1.4.6. Were the additions at the back and the side? And they wouldn't be here at all except they are too close to the street on the 24 feet and that long predated the Sherburne zoning bylaw. So anybody?
Hi, I'm Caleb Dresser. I'm one of the butters. I'm just curious. I have a question for the architect. We're obviously concerned about making sure our well water is clean and safe. Does this plan involve ledge removal? Is there a basement planned? Just while we have the architect presenting this, I'd be curious to learn that.
So ledge is one of those things that you really can't know is there until you dig. You know, there there's a possibility for that area that we will find ledge. As far as we have learned from the installation of things on the property, such as the septic system, that they they did not hit ledge. And there's no existing ledge in the basement. There is ledge that comes into the property in certain areas, but without excavation, there's no way to say that that it there is ledge there or not ledge there.
Okay. Is there a like, how does a basement plan? How likely is that?
I'll show you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
These are the floor plans. And obviously, the one farthest to the right is the foundation plan. So that is the area underneath the addition, which as currently constituted is just a crawl space. So that would go down at least four foot, four feet below grade, or if it hit ledge, it would end up being pinned into the ledge. The ledge basically becomes part of the foundation. Or or there's or you remove it. But until you see what's there, you can't really say what you're going to do.
What are the Thank you. The
Go ahead, Zach.
Footage of that excavate to be excavated space, just the not the not the volume, but the.
The square footage?
Yeah.
So the proposed area, I don't know that off the top of my head. I know including the second floor, it's 11, 1,160 square feet.
So that's including the second floor, you said?
Yeah, I didn't write down just for one floor, unfortunately.
Yeah, Zach, this is Sean cutting the owner of Cutting Edge Homes. The addition is right around 30 by 20, roughly.
Yeah. So I mean, for you to remove the for you to remove the requisite, what is it, 10 cubic? What what's the the local, I'm trying to think of what the local bylaw is regarding the Board of Health for ledge removal. It would have to be, was it 10 cubic yards or something like that? Just seem trying to figure out the math of whether or not this is even a real it's a real probable issue versus a possible issue.
Well, let me let me toss a potential solution out there and Zach, see what you think of this. Mr. Dresser, is one of your concerns that you don't want them to blast?
Yeah, I think our questions are partly about blasting and partly about implications for local water quality in the aquifer when blasting or rock is fractured and removed. We have a wet that's pretty close to the property and there's obviously issues around like manganese and lead and other heavy metals. So.
Okay, and and Sean and Chris?
Yeah.
Let's let's say you do hit ledge. What's what's the plan?
Yeah. So I mean, I think as it really comes down to the amount of ledge, right? When it let's just talk hypothetically, when we face ledge on any project, the first thing that we want to do is understand what are the cost implications to the client, right? And typically what a client will do is, I'm using a hypothetical here, but if to remove the ledge is $5,000 or $6,000, they might be interested. If the ledge removal is $50,000 or $60,000, it might be a different situation. So I do know a new septic system was installed in 2022. No ledge was hit at that point. But in the hypothetical, when the excavator was on site there, we would open up the area, see if there is even any ledge to speak of. If there isn't, I think the client's hopes in that space would be able to be some additional storage and in potentially a gym space. It was really, really important to our client because of the history of the house to not demo the existing structure. And so the existing basement is wet and not great ceiling height. So she really doesn't feel comfortable storing things in that basement. So so in the new space, in the in the what is a family room and mudroom addition on the first floor in a primary suite on the second floor, we want to be able to reserve the right to be able to put a basement down there for a gym or for storage, just because the existing foundation doesn't have that. I just want to be really clear because we have exchanged an email or two with Mr. Dresser. We have no problem when we're at that point to have a conversation on what the ramifications would be. We've, at least in the history of Cutting Edge as a general contractor, have removed that legend in different ways than just blasting. And obviously, our client doesn't want polluted drinking water for herself and her family either. So I think everyone has a combined interest of making sure that we are doing everything by state and local regulations. And again, we have not experienced any test pits where there even has been ledge that's been found. And then just one final piece is we were able to see that if you go from closest point to closest point from, I believe, Mr. Dresser is at is at 40 Whitney Street. The distance is about 370 feet from closest point to closest point. So we do want to reemphasize that all of the work on this would be done from our client's property. We do believe that there is some substantial space between there and we certainly want to make sure that any project that we do here, we're leaving it better than where we left it and and our client is going to make sure to want to have good, good drinking water as well.
Okay, thank you. I very much appreciate that. I do also want to say, you know, I'm I bring up the drink. What I think the actual plans here look gorgeous. And and so, you know, very supportive of the rest of that. Just want to make sure the water is okay.
So, Mr. Dresser, you're you're not required, but I will ask you, do you have a proposal for how you deal with the ledge issue?
I am not a builder or an architect or an expert on that. I do work in the Department of Environmental Health at Harvard, but I am not a water management person. Our preference would be to avoid ledge disruption because that has contaminated wells elsewhere in town. If they're able to get down there and avoid ledge removal and complete the property as planned, that that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here from the public to speak for or against the project?
Chair, I just want to make a note that we sent to Jeannie earlier. We do have three signed letters from neighbors in support of the project that we emailed earlier today. So we have signed letters of support from 41 Whitney Street, 30 Curve Street and 50 Whitney Street. And just as a matter of practice, everyone who received the note card of via butters also received the package of these plans with a narrative from the homeowner, our client, prior to the meeting.
Very, very excellent preparation. My head is off to you. And and Jeannie, a set of these plans are are on record with us?
Yes, and I sent them to the dressers today, so they had copies of them.
Got it. Okay.
Hopefully, if anybody else needs them, I have them.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Board members, as always, your feelings are terribly important to me. What are your feelings on this petition under 1.4.6? Oh, and, and, uh, could you please stop, uh, sharing, Chris?
Yes.
Thanks very much. All right, Mr. Fitch, Mr. McBride.
Yeah, well, I think this looks like a very good, uh, plan and idea. And that the, uh, construction of this, uh, extension is not going to, uh, have a detrimental impact on the neighborhood and I would be, uh, in favor of, uh, allowing this special permit.
Mr. McBride.
Yeah, agreed. I think, uh, the plans are great. I think we're, you know, restoring the, uh, historic structure is a, a great idea and it doesn't appear to cause any detriment or increased, um, uh, imposition, violation of our, of our setbacks, so I'm in support of it.
And I'm as well, um, how do you gents feel, if at all, about any restriction on the ledge removal or that, that any hook that they should come back to us or something like that, or should we just say we're relying on the Board of Health's rules?
I mean, I don't think it's our jurisdiction to condition a Board of Health, um, requirement personally, but, uh, that's my perspective, so.
Mr. Fitch?
Well, I I agree with Zach. I, I think that we should certainly, uh, make our permit, uh, subject to approval of the Board of Health.
Yeah, uh, I, I think as an academic matter, I may disagree with Zach that we're jurisdictionally limited, but um, the wise exercise of jurisdiction is you don't always choose to exercise it, even if you might technically have it. Um, and, and therefore I'd, I'd be in favor of no condition here, uh, other than the condition that they comply with all uh, rules and regulations of, of the other town boards, including those of, uh, the Board of Health uh, with respect to, uh, ledge removal. Either one of you gents feel motivated to, uh, make a motion?
Uh, I will, I'll make an inartful motion to approve, uh, petition uh, for special permit here, I guess.
Okay, um, and, and with a friendly amendment, I'll make that, that we grant the finding under one point four point six. Um, under the condition that they comply with all other regulations of town boards. All right. So. I'll second with that friendly amendment. Further discussion? I don't see any. All right, all in favor, say aye. Do it by roll call, no backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right, you have your, don't go away. You're up next. You have your one point four point six finding. Next up, same team, special permit under three point two point two for an additional dwelling unit. Forty-two Whitney, Whitney Street. Who's speaking? Chris again?
Yeah, I will speak. Um, so I'd like to share my screen again and kind of do the same thing as the last last.
Please.
Oh, okay, can you see that? Everybody's got it.
Yeah.
So same property forty-two Whitney Street. Uh, adjacent to the existing house, which we discussed, is this existing garage workshop that was its last identity. Um, it's been used for multiple different purposes over the course of its life. And it is what we are looking to convert into what I call the Carriage House, which is a additional, uh, housekeeping unit. So the existing garage workshop is, uh, uh, basically a CMU rectangle. Some of the exterior walls are made of CMU, as you can see in the, this rear photo with the, uh, CMU chimney going up. It is a, it is a two-car garage. No, it's a single garage with that workshop area and a loft space that you can access. Our proposal, uh, is to make it into the, um, housekeeping unit. So it will, I think the plan is probably where I should take you guys for most of the conversation. But the area marked in purple is the habitable gross floor uh, area of the unit on the first floor. Outside of the garage area and the porch, we have a kitchen, a, a small modest, um, sitting area, closet for, near the entrance, and then the steps to the second floor, which leads you up to the, what will be the only bedroom up there. There is also a bonus room, which is adjacent and across the hallway to it, which is about the same size, but doesn't have a closet space or a door attached to it. That's going to be um, kind of a, a mixed match of office space, living space, depending on what's, what's happening with the program at that time. So it, it, it's intended to be a one-bedroom, uh, housekeeping suite that will be used for her parents to visit and her parents, uh, long-term as well.
Okay, and the total square footage, if I'm reading this correctly, I'm squinting a little bit. Total habitable square footage is under twelve hundred.
That's correct, yes.
Got it.
And the footprint of the existing structure is the same footprint of the, the, as what we're proposing. So we would be tearing it down, but rebuilding it exactly in the same location.
And as I just want to add there, this was another part of the structure, uh, sorry, another structure on the property that um, we had made every effort to try to restore, but because it's actually built out of CMU block, um, it, it didn't make sense to restore it, um, based on the cost to do so. So this would be a, a removal and replace, but it's in, it's being replaced in the same footprint that it is today.
Yeah, it, it also.
No new foundation, no new blasting.
There is, there is going to be a new foundation because the current one doesn't have a footing. But this actually is the area where, um, on, on a different area of the property that we can, Mr. Chair, go back and look up at. But, uh, septic system was dug there. This will not have a full basement. Um, this would be on a crawl space only, um, and the septic system was dug in very close proximity to here, so we are fairly confident that there would not be any ledge removal on this side of the property.
Yeah.
The area, the area in front of the garage, which I'm circling with my mouse, and then the area to the left of the garage was all where the septic work was done and that had the excavation fairly recently.
Got it. Sherburne ledge can always surprise you, but the odds are in your favor this time.
Yeah. And I, and I think, Mr. We can confidently say to Mr. Dresser, in here, if there was any ledge, we would likely just pin to that ledge. We, we wouldn't, we would not go through the exercise here just because of the Board of Health restrictions of putting a basement underneath a garage space. Um, this was always going to be just, um, we would have honestly used the foundation here if we could, but it doesn't have a footing, so um, structurally, we need the structural engineers' assets to replace the foundation here.
Okay, got it.
How, how far does that carport extend, uh, towards the, the front? Uh, towards the street? For the direction of that carport?
I believe it's around, uh, a little over fourteen feet.
Wide, but what's the depth?
Oh, it would be twenty feet. The building is roughly twenty by forty.
Okay.
The other garage spaces look like they're twenty-two. Zach, so it's probably going to have the same dimensions, but.
Yeah, but I just noticed that the setback was uh, a little bit less than sixty feet on the front carport overhang, but that doesn't.
Well, uh, let's see, that's a good point.
Let me just find that on.
That would be a new non-conformity.
This is a sixty-foot setback for frontage?
Yes.
Where it says, where it more than seventy feet, yeah.
Okay. So I, I guess I saw the fifty-six, so no, thank you for that, yeah.
No problem, yeah.
The right way to look at it though, Zach. Um, okay. Um, sorry for a couple interruptions there. Uh, keep, keep going, or are you done with your presentation?
And I think it, um, any questions that might come up? I think it's fairly, um, straightforward. We can look at the, the unit more depth if you'd like, or if you feel like we all seem to understand it, then I can answer any questions and Sean can as well.
Yeah, and I think it's just another important point, too, is we really wanted to make sure that the, that this structure was in matching the same, uh, architectural significance of the house, right? You've just kind of got a structure there now, so we wanted to make sure that anything that we were, were doing was adding and, um, just reiterating what Chris said, um, the client's hope here is that if needed, um, they've got a long-term solution, um, for her parents. One of the things that's a little bit challenging is because we are renovating the existing structure, the staircase is actually pretty steep in the main body of the house. It would not pass today's codes. So, um, having an auxiliary structure, also, you know, trying to do our part to make it affordable to live in the town of Sherborne, um, and being able to do that as, as a daughter um, is something that was important to this client. So, um, tho- those were some of the, some of the auxiliary uh, uh, thought process that went into the planning of, of this structure.
Right. Um, and just for, for people listening with sort of a forty-B spin, um, um, the Sherburne ADUs, Affordable Dwelling Units, uh, provide what I call affordable, in fact, additional housing. Uh, they do not count for SHI, uh, index. Um, if you wanted to have a unit like this, count for SHI, you need to jump through a bunch of hoops, including, uh, leasing it out by lottery. Uh, which is not proven popular, but, but I agree with Mr. Cutting that, that affordable, in fact, is, is a very helpful side effect of these ADUs. Um, okay. Um, anyone else from the public to speak for or against this addition for an ADU in the revised, uh, Carriage House? All right, I don't see anybody. Board members?
Uh, generally in support of the project. I think it looks great. It'll improve, uh, the, uh, visual aesthetic of that, of that property, so.
Thank you. Mr. McBride, another piece is, this house is known because it's got a big green propane tank facing the street, and, uh, it is our commitment that there's another portion of this project, as that's a pretty significant landscaping and, and planting portion that, uh, we are going to make sure that that propane tank is removed from, uh, about fifteen feet off the front of the, off the front of Whitney Street.
Oh.
We appreciate that.
Bless, thank you for that.
It's a public service.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably a good safety item. All right, Mr. Fitch?
Well, I think it's a great project. I'm, I'm glad that they're renovating this, uh, nineteenth-century house and building a, uh, complimentary structure that can be used, uh, as a dwelling unit. I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I, 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 I second, I guess it's, I third that view, um. So I'd, I'd, I'd make a motion that the petition a twenty twenty-four dash nine of, uh, of Christopher Baylott, the architect, for a special permit under three point two point two for an additional housekeeping unit at forty-two Whitney Street in a Residence B District be granted under all the terms and conditions of, uh, three point two point two, um. Jeannie, do we usually do these for two years to start, just to make sure there's not a problem?
Um, I think you've always done them for four.
Okay, in that case, four year, for, for a term of four years. And, uh, to be built in accordance with the plans that are on, on file with the board from tonight's meeting. That's my, that's my motion. I'll take, uh, friendly or even unfriendly amendments.
And in all conditions of other boards?
Yes, that'd be built in, 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 um, I think.
Okay, I second that.
Yep, right. Um, further discussion? All right, um, we'll do it by roll call. All in favor, vote aye. No backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right, congratulations. You have your, you have your, your ADU permit. Looks like a fabulous project. Very good luck. Hope it's a big success for everybody and that everybody's drinking water stays nice and pristine and pure.
Exactly. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Good night.
All right. Um, this is a request from Barry and Nancy Levy for modification to a finding we did last October for reconstructing addition to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling at one twenty-eight Hollis Street. So-called, I believe, Century Farm location. And it sounds like partway, as in most projects, partway along the way, things change, so tell us your story, please.
Well, we'd like to add a bathroom, uh, on the first floor, uh, adjacent to which would be a, a room that we use as, as a downstairs bedroom. Rebecca Elsie, who's the, uh, representative architect, is here this evening, uh, can provide further in, information.
Great, Rebecca, can you, can you put up the plan and show us what you're doing that's changed, please?
Sure, I'm just sharing the, uh, revised plot plan. So we're just revising our footprint. It's slightly closer than the previous design to the street. Um, as you recall, this house sits entirely within the front setback. Uh, it's a conforming lot. It's just not conforming, um, in the front setback. So, our previous design, you can see the dashed footprint of what was approved back, um, I think it was October. And now we've reduced the footprint and we're moving the footprint and the addition slightly closer to the street, about one foot, so it's not a huge difference, but nonetheless needs to be documented.
Yes, and it's, and it's overall smaller, obviously, by a fair amount.
Previously it was about four square feet and now we're looking at a hundred and fifty-four square feet, so, um, I have some elevations. So the scale's a lot smaller, still in keeping with the look, um, of the historic home.
If, if anything, it's, it's it's less disruptive of the look of the, of the other home.
But.
Um, and, and the other, the other was not disruptive. I'm not, I, I thought it was an elegant job.
No, it was just larger, more extensive.
Okay, um, and, uh, can you, just in case there are people, uh, looking who were not on before, can you just scroll up to the pictures of the, of the, of the existing building? Yeah, that one? And this, this is the project. Everybody, if you, if you live in this side of town, you know the property well and drive past it a million times.
Right, you can see Hollis Street's right here across the page, um, so the addition on this left side.
Lose, 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 lose a few lilacs, but Sherburne has a lot of those, so fortunately. Okay, um, is that your presentation, ma'am?
That is it, yes.
Okay, excellent. And procedurally, I think this is a request for an amendment to our prior finding to swap in this plan from the prior plan.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone here from the public to speak for or against this project? And Rebecca, could you stop sharing your screen, please? Thank you. Hmm, crowds thinned. That's a, it's a good sign for you, Barry.
Thank you.
Um, okay, um, nobody to speak for, nobody to speak against. Gentlemen, how do you, how do the board members feel about this?
Well, it seems like a very good idea, good plan, and is not, um, detrimental at all to the neighborhood as designed and um, I like it. Great house.
Thank you.
No objection. Yeah, no objections. It looks, looks great and I give my hat off to anyone who's renovating an old home.
I accept that.
Yes.
Um, okay, and Jonathan does, too. It is, it is a whole old house, uh, through here. Um, okay, I hereby move that we, um, amend our prior finding dated October twenty-three, twenty twenty-three with respect to one twenty-eight Hollis Street to replace the plans which we approved, um, with the new plan submitted tonight, uh, and that we make the finding and, and that we do that because the new plans are not, uh, not, uh, they are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's my motion.
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I don't see any. I don't see any. All in favor, say aye. Do it by roll call. No backvotes, aye.
Bitch, aye.
McBride, aye.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Elsie, Mr. Levy, good luck. I hope it goes really well for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Take care.
All right, the lovely and talented Ginny Guthrie. My question.
So go ahead. You don't have a meeting, I don't think, for two or at least two weeks.
Break my, break my freaking.
Possible?
I don't think so. I think uh we are good for. Yeah.
That's right. But but we do have a lot to to read and think about on uh on Farm Road in Washington because the the fur is flowing on both of those, so. Um, something for you you gents to think about is um what happens after uh uh June fifteenth, when I will no longer serve as chair? Um, I'm I'm sure there will be a moderately vicious floor fight, floor fight for this.
He did, he said he wasn't going to serve as chair. He didn't say anything about not serving.
Well, there is a possibility that that with the right incentives, uh I I might swap out and and become uh the associate member and let um Todd have 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 the full slot so that I could have a much lighter, lighter lift.
Full, in full disclosure, I tried to um convince John to uh take over as chairman uh due to my relative, I would call it neophyte status uh to this process, but um.
He underestimates himself.
Uh, but I think, you know, um, no good deed goes unpunished. So I I will throw my hat in the ring for chair if I have support uh from Rick, who may or may not still be serving, but he may be on my short list of of uh favorites on my cell phone, so.
Right, well, and 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 another uh option that I'd be totally in favor of is if you can find someone else to be the additional member, I I wouldn't.
I have been, I have been soliciting the, soliciting the ranks of the the younger generation in Sherburne uh to try to find some, some enthusiasm, particularly those who have grown up and now have kids in Sherburne, my kid's age, uh who know. So.
Right.
I haven't heard, I haven't heard any uh any tremendous enthusiasm yet, but I'm doing my best.
Okay, well, it it it's public service and, you know, uh that is the right demographic, all kidding aside, even though we joke about things a lot here. Um, and and technically, of course, it's up to the selectmen. Um, but but the current select board and 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 the recent select board and the recent ZBA have had a very cooperative relationship. And if you had someone, I'm I'm sure that that person could be, would be blessed. Um, in the early two thousands, John, you may not remember this. I remember this. There was a tradition that the ZBA uh picked their successors, sort of regardless of what the select board wanted to do, which has nothing to do with the status of the Commonwealth. And when when this select board, when this select board said, no, we're we're going to pick somebody else, they all resigned en masse in a fit of pique.
I think this recently happened to another uh.
Board?
Yeah, was it, was that over, was that over who gets appointed? I think it was over a different issue.
It was, yeah.
Well, whatever. Um, I I I I'm hoping we can be a little more uh, a little higher standards of decorum than that. Um, okay, we'll be thinking about that. Um, I I I like working with you guys, but it has been ten years and um I'm trying to wind down a whole bunch of other changes in my life, so.
Okay.
Yay.
All right, we'll talk, we'll talk further in this topic. Um, how about a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, everybody.
Any further discussion, all in favor, aye? No backvotes, aye?
Bitch, aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all very, very much, as always. Have a great evening. Bye-bye.
Couple of weeks. Bye.